Good.
And you are live.
Alrighty. Okay, so I uh let me find my notes. I call this meeting to order and can we do a roll call for a quorum, please?
Mayor Wallace.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Hardy.
Yeah.
Councilmember Emily Hill.
Here.
Councilmember Ware.
Here.
Councilmember Wallace.
Here.
Councilmember Deja Hill.
Here.
Councilmember Krupa. Jean. Letty was on.
Alright, so I did hear him, so we have a quorum present. Uh it's moved now to the pleasure of allegiance and uh I'm gonna ask our Chief Phillips who, you know, did a mighty good job last week along with uh Lydia Collins back there. Can you lead us in the pleasure of allegiance, please?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and justice for all.
Alright, do we have any public comments?
Uh Mayor, we do. We actually just have Tracy. She's gonna do a quick announcement.
Cool, go ahead Tracy. You uh have three minutes. If you go over that, I'm on, we're gonna kick you out from meeting.
You're gonna.
Oh yeah, go ahead Tracy.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to remind everybody that this weekend, this Saturday, February twenty seven, between the hours of ten AM and two PM at Manor City Hall located at one zero five East Ecclestone Street, we will be having a PPE event. This is sponsored by our friends at Austin Public Health, City of Austin, and Travis County. And just wanted to thank them for bringing this free event to our citizens here in Manor. Again, it's a free PPE event, so anytime between the hours of ten AM and two PM, Saturday, February twenty seventh, come on by and get your free PPE kits. Um I do have plenty of volunteers. I don't know if council's interested in volunteering, but if you wanna come on down, I will put you to work.
I appreciate it. Uh and then, and I'll do some uh public comments real quick. Um I wanna give my hats off to um our city hall team, especially as I already said, Chief Phillips, the Manor Police Department team, and as well as Lydia Collins uh stepping in to fill in as our acting city manager. Um and just, you know, staying up, working all the calls, trying to find all the contact numbers that the Mayor Pro Tim and I were asking for and uh working above and beyond um to also take care of individuals outside of our jurisdiction. Um I think this is the first time that we, you know, we really saw that the systems that are not in place and uh we could easily went with the mentality of just taking care of normal business and 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 the people within our jurisdiction. So I applaud them for going above and beyond uh for for making those contacts, for asking their contacts and pressing their contacts to find out statuses on on other things as well um to take care of everybody within the Manor area uh last week. Um I also want to definitely acknowledge uh our Mayor Pro Tim. Most people don't realize he's been putting that type of work in during the last two stated disasters as well. And uh I appreciate you being a part of the team and that's why I believe the council voted to have you as the Mayor Pro Tim. And I'm glad that the community is able to really truly see uh uh the magnitude uh that you bring to the council and and support and advocacy for the community as well. So with that, I conclude my public comments. Alright, do we have any other public comments? Alright.
No sir.
There being none, we're gonna move down to reports. Reports here, Capital Improvement Committee, Mayor Pro Tim Harvey.
Okay, um alright. Forgive me as I'm transitioning still out of uh 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 last week in the weekend into uh into, I guess, old business, business as usual, or whatever. Um so we had some uh conversations um prior to last week about um capital improvement projects uh as it relates to economic development um and certain pieces of uh uh equipment related to uh, you know, street equipment and stuff like that. And so um I think my biggest takeaways was um uh uh from that meeting was uh finding out, looking at all of the current capital improvements that we are, I have for water and wastewater, and then also uh looking at some of the things that we might be trying to add into the comprehensive planning um process and bringing back and uh collaborating those things, but also um looking at a committee, capital, capital improvements committee. Uh I think we said that it used to be a committee like this. Um but having a capital improvements committee that's going to uh really look at um uh those big projects related to streets, street machines, water, wastewater, those infrastructure pieces. Um and think out of that meeting, I was asking for some uh uh house related to um street machine um to get a street uh, get our um to purchase the machine to get our streets fixed and um uh we got a few indirect quotes, but um still haven't got anything in writing. And so I'm hoping that I can get those numbers so um so that we can have conversations with council um in regards to what the direction we need to go with that area. Um am I missing anything? Uh Lydia or Mayor?
Uh I think what I would add to is um, you know, we're doing and we have been doing the quarterly transportation meetings with, you know, Capital Metro and in in all the larger entities that that have a huge decision maker or player uh like the county on on our roads, our main roads. And this was a discussion of how do we also look internally uh to the roads that we do own and start to have the planning process uh as Mayor Pro Tim just spoke of, um the planning process of, okay, which roads need to be developed? When are we gonna be uh at a growth rate where or as much work needs to be done to start purchasing equipment? And the training that needs to go with that. Uh so then we can start doing stuff more in-house than contracting it out because now it's more cost beneficial to do so. And to then also be able to take what we're learning from the county, from the state, uh from the region regarding transportation that may be occurring in our area in trying to analyze and assess what things we may have planned, uh how some roads may align with construction that will probably be paid for through tech stock. So it becomes less of an individual cost to us because we need to re-shift or readjust uh what we're, what we were planning to do internally with maybe some of the other construction uh that that may be going on. Um so just, just another discussion of how do we continue to uh improve, uh bring all the players together at the table and and really start planning out costs um and and when we need to start making certain transitions from uh, okay, now we probably need to hire someone or look at hiring someone, or now we need to probably try to look at purchasing a piece of equipment. With training needs to go with that, so we stay ahead of the game. Uh, go ahead.
I'll, I'll say, I'll say in relation to the transportation piece, um I think Frank had brought up um the ability to uh, we talked about assess industries digitally so that we can prioritize them. We talked about um, I guess, the software equipment necessary for that so that we could go out, assess our streets digitally, prioritize them and then determine those costs and needs. And um I think we were also wanting to look at all of our current bonds and our tax rates and different things like that and just kinda see where we stood at um and our our debt pieces as well. So we can, again, have all the information possible so we can um be up to date on our uh on decisions we need to make moving forward.
And just for, just for clarity, who is on the um capital improvements committee?
So this was a discussion um for for the group and then we'll probably add the capital improvements committee to be approved by council in the next meeting. Uh, next month meeting.
I just wanted to clarify that the information that was given was a discussion uh um piece that wasn't part of the cap, it wasn't part of the capital improvement committee. But I just wanted to clarify that.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, you're correct. We're just giving an update of the conversation we did have to council, so so that they're aware of, you know, that we believe that this needs to be created. And so when it comes to them, hopefully, next city council meeting, they already have some background information on it.
Gotcha, cuz one of the other pieces was the, before we could actually give uh that Frank suggested prior to giving any, going after equipment and giving you information about personnel and training, is that the first thing we have to do is really assess what um what the streets' conditions are currently and and kinda go from there. So we're not gonna be able to give you any kind of numbers for equipment and all that until that gets first done. So you're probably looking at about at least a six-month process before that can even happen. And I have to actually take that to the budget committee because I did get a figure on what that robot, uh road botics um uh database would cost us. So, but there'll be more to come.
No, sounds good. And I think it goes back to, you know, what we're gonna be talking about is as far as agenda item number uh twelve. I think that aligns just right um when we're gonna be talking about roads and economic development within that comprehensive plan. So um, cool. Appreciate it, Lydia.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that. I saw a committee on here and I was, it kinda stunted me for a second. It stunted me for a second.
I was like, no, he's not supposed to say anything.
Yeah, I think we're gonna create, yeah, create, try to create it on the committee, but thanks for.
Correct. I know that it is. Um I think it, we were, we were, I think we just missed the part of that we needed to establish it and we were gonna establish it by ordinance and uh because of last week, they just slipped, that one just slipped by me.
No problem. Sounds good. Anybody have any questions regarding this, this report about uh um the capital improvements and in the desire to bring as an agenda the establishment of a committee regard uh for capital improvement? Alright, moving on to public hearings. Public hearing number one. Uh conduct a public hearing upon a rezoning request for ten point zero one acres more or less out of the AC Caldwell survey number fifty-two, abstract one fifty-four, Travis County, Texas, being located at fourteen seven one nine US Highway two ninety east, Manor, Texas, from agricultural A to heavy commercial C three. Scott?
Uh evening, Mayor and Council. Um so this, this ten acres, it's, it's, if you know where Crant Select Woodworks is um down on two ninety, kinda in between Kimbrough and eleven hundred, um this ten acres is right next to that. Um they, they were annexed, this property was annexed back in twenty seventeen. And that's why it's so agricultural. That's, that's the default zoning after annexation if a request isn't made at the time. Um subsequently, back in June, May-June, um this company, this uh EARTC um thought that the property wasn't in the city limits. And so they, you know, signed a lease or, you know, started the process of moving on to it. Uh they're they're basically like a um a construction services type business. Um they install like fiber lines and traffic lights. I think Tech Dot's one of their, one of their um companies they work for. Um but either way, um they, you know, the city notified them that, you know, agricultural zoning didn't permit their use um and that they had to begin the process to be in compliance or they'd have to, you know, not be on the property. Um and so this is, you know, they're beginning the process now. Um and so they've requested C three heavy commercial because that um permits their use and then um their use involves kind of a large, like lay-down yard, kind of outdoor storage area for their equipment. Um and C three doesn't restrict the size of that. And so um that's why they went with C three. Um planning commission did approve it, recommend approval, um staff is as well. Um and, you know, once they go on from this, if if you all approve this zoning, um they'll, they still need to plat the property. They'll do site plans which include screening, hard screening and all that. Um building permits, they have a couple steps after this, but um their zoning is their first step.
So with the recommendation on here is is the rezoning that they're asking for in alignment with um what we wanna have built over there?
Um in some degrees, yes. Um, you know, we always promote commercial on two ninety. And so C three heavy commercial, it's the most permissive zoning we have. It's a combination of C two medium commercial and uh some light industrial. And so that's kinda why you get the, you know, unrestricted outdoor storage area. You know, it's kinda meant to be the most intense type of commercial use, but not uh all the way too industrial. Um so it's it it fits along with, you know, two ninety being a commercial corridor. Um but, you know, we don't have that future land use map yet from the comprehensive plan, but um, you know, two ninety, we always say it's commercial always on two ninety, so.
Okay, any, any questions from council?
Is this replacing the existing buildings or structures that's on there now on that ten acres or like to make it bigger than that?
Right now, they are using the, the structures that are there. Um cuz like I said, when they thought they weren't in the city limits, they only went to the fire department and they got their necessary fire department approvals to occupy their spaces. Um and so they haven't you know, significantly modified any of the structures that are there. Um, you know, we'll look at it and see if they needed any city issued building permits for any of the work they did. Um but right now, it's just um, they're using the existing spaces.
Yeah, so I think the key piece here is as long as it, yeah, at least for me, as long as it meeting the zoning that we were gonna be going to anyways or need to go to anyways, uh at least for this phase of the discussion, that's what we're, we're really talking about. Um cuz as you already said, Scott, when it comes to the development piece and what they decide to actually build there, it's gonna come back anyways, so.
Yeah, so after this, I mean, it is, it's administrative, so there's site plans, um plaits and everything, that all um it wouldn't come back through um this council. Um but they would have all of our development standards that they'd have to follow. Um and it is possible, um, you know, most of the zoning on two ninety is for C two medium commercial. Um and so it is within your authority. If you think heavy commercial is too permissive, it's too much, you can, you know, change it to C two. You can do any less intense zoning. Um C two, it does still allow for their use, but it restricts the amount of outdoor storage they can have. So it may um result in them not being able to use the property. Or they'd have to build a large building to contain all of their equipment.
Any additional questions?
I do. So um with our, with the, the maximum, how does that um meet our, our beautification and aesthetics on the side? I guess I wanna drive down two ninety and see a whole lot of factory stuff.
Yeah, uh so there's probably, just topographically, it actually, right now, I mean, I can't speak to whenever the highway gets expanded, but right now, it's, it's actually a little hill. And so um, you don't.
You're saying it'll be hidden.
Uh yeah, and then, like I said, uh there, we have screening requirements for outdoor storage. So I think there, you know, it's eight-foot fences that are solid. Um so that, that would fall under their site plan. So when they, you know, move forward with that, we would have screening requirements for their whole outdoor storage area.
Okay, and so anything less than um C three that we recommend would be too small for them to continue to conduct their business. Because what they have now is.
In medium commercial C two, it's related to the size of the building. And so the structures that are there are pretty small, so they're just using it as their kinda office. Um and so if they only get I forget what it is, it's only like, maybe like one percent or five percent of the gross floor area of your building is, can be used for outdoor storage. So it's um pretty restricted. Uh and so that how they're currently using a property, it wouldn't work for them. They'd have to build like a warehouse essentially to contain their things. And again, I don't know if that works for their business model. Um so.
Okay, will there be trees? Was that still in there?
Yes.
Or it is?
Landscaping requirement for any, any commercial development.
Okay, good. Alright, thank you, Scott.
Any additional questions?
Um so what's the uh so the majority of their business, so most of that uh, the purchase of that land is just basically gonna go towards um store and stuff, correct?
Yeah, it'd probably be like their installation equipment, their trucks, you know, their fiber that they have, uh if they keep the stoplights up and solve her text on, on their property.
And we probably won't how that impact our, uh I guess, our uh tax system at just the value of the property? And they, they won't be doing business directly with us. That part, you said they don't attract the likes and stuff for whomever?
Yeah, I mean, they, they according to their website, and they contract, contract with a couple of municipalities or have contracted municipalities and NQT. Um but, you know, if the city, when we get to that point, when we're installing city maintained stoplights, if they bid on contracts and it's possible that they can do the work for us.
Yeah, I just thinking, you know, the question is kinda like, alright, just again, you know, when we're talking about an ordinance is and the way this, this thing is set up, then we're talking about two ninety, nine seventy-three, trying to be that high revenue generating pipeline corridors, you know, that have a facility that's there, but they're doing business outside the city. How are they generating revenue for us and are taking up land off of what's supposed to be a high revenue generating corridor? And I mean, that's where I get back to the piece of, you know, having, having a conversation with council that if we need to go back and re-look at these ordinances and make sure there's more, more zoning categories, so we don't have such a huge leeway of going from uh restaurant, distillery to warehouse that doesn't sell anything.
Yeah, so that would be um, I kinda like C two is more with the sales tax, or any uses, I had said before, C three kinda combines some of that light industrial in there. Um and so there's more of those uses that are kinda the warehouse type spaces. Um but they're particularly is permitted under both, it's just that outdoor storage is restricted and C two.
Any additional questions? I see you trying to say something, Anne, but it's not coming through.
And this was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, correct, Scott?
Yes, uh four zero.
Okay, so it was unanimous vote?
Yes.
You might have to, you might have to call in, uh Anne. Alright. Any other question?
Yes, Scott, was there any talk of possible uh new job being created by having this uh zoning changed for these people since they are going to be having these different contracts? That uh possible employment opportunities for the citizens of Manor?
Um, they didn't mention that. Um no, they're, they were relocated or had relocated from a facility in Austin. Um so, and it wasn't far, it was over not that, not just like, just west of one thirty, I think, is where their previous location was. So uh I'm sure all their existing employees are just moved over. Um, I don't know if this space gives them more room to grow. Um but yeah, this, I mean, I mean, this is, it is just a zoning case that this is a unique one because there's an existing business that's there that's trying to come into compliance, but uh really, it's it is just a zoning case that technically, you know, this business can decide to leave and then, you know, we still have the C three zoning. And so anything that's permitted under C three could then locate there.
So Anne is asking if we're able to change the uh default category?
From agricultural, like when things get annexed?
Okay, yeah, she's having some issues with the audio aspect of it. Alright. Do we have this as an agenda item? Can't recall.
Hmm, there's an action item.
It's actually, okay, as an action, okay. Alright, any other questions before I ask for a motion to close this public hearing?
No.
Alright, do I have a motion to close this public hearing?
Mayor, I'm motion, I make a motion, we close public hearing for the rezoning requests for ten point zero one acres more or less of the AC Caldwell survey number two fifty-two, abstract one five four, Travis County, Texas, and being located at one four seven one nine US Highway two ninety east, Mayor, Texas, from agricultural A to heavy commercial C three.
It has been properly motioned. Do I have a second?
I second.
Anne seconded. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, roll call, please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Anne Ware?
She's saying yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
He said yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, uh hearing is closed. Moving on to public hearing number two. To conduct a public hearing upon a rezoning request for eight point nine three acres more or less out of the AC Caldwell survey, Travis County, Texas, and being located at thirteen three hundred US Highway two ninety, Manor, Texas, from agricultural A to medium curst, commercial C two. Scott?
Uh, so this one, it's a little west from the property we just looked at. It's at the intersection there, the northeast corner of Bodark and two ninety, um in front of Presidential Glen. Uh and so again, this was annexed back in twenty seventeen. Uh and so that's. Uh and so again, this was annexed back in twenty seventeen, uh and so that's has the default ag zoning on it. And they are requesting C two medium commercial. Um planning commission also uh recommended approval of this one and staff is as well.
Okay, so it's basically just the same same thing as the first the other public hearing, just just a different section of land?
Yeah, and it's for a C two medium commercial, so the you can see the property that's right behind it is also C two, all of that. Purple pink that's on there, that's all C two, so um most all the commercials owning we have on two ninety is C two. So this is consistent with bunch of other properties.
Okay, any questions from council?
No questions.
All right, do I have a motion on the floor to close the public hearing?
Mayor, I make a motion, we close the public hearing for rezoning request for eight point nine three acres more or less of the A C Caldwell survey Travis County, Texas. And being located at one three three zero zero US Highway two ninety east, Maynor, Texas. From agricultural A to medium commercial C two.
It has been so motioned, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Uh oh, I have to get to Mayor Pro Tim Harvey, um any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yeah, yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace? Tanya?
Yeah, yes.
Councilmember Hill? Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, public hearing is closed. Moving on to agenda item number three, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the city council minutes of February third, twenty twenty one, regular meeting. Let's see here, and we also have uh the consideration discussion of possible action on the acceptance of the January twenty twenty one departmental reports. The second and final reading uh consideration discussion and possible action on an ordinance annexing fifty two point zero one nine acres more or less adjacent and contiguous to the city limits and being located at fourteen seven oh four US Highway two ninety east. Maynor, Texas, do I have a request to pull any of these items from the consent agenda? All right, do I have a motion on the floor?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as stated in the agenda items of uh agenda for the city council meeting on two twenty four, two thousand twenty one.
All right, it has been so motioned, do I have a second?
Second.
And probably and probably seconded, do I have a question to the motion? Questions to the motion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So the recent public hearing that was closed is now um approved under the consent agenda, so now it's gonna no longer come back to council, right?
No. No, this this is a um second and final reading from the from the last meeting.
Oh, okay, maybe I didn't go down far enough. Thank you.
No problem. And I do want to say that it does say something in there in the reports about Berry Queen, so um those of y'all that are are watching this might want to read it. Okay, um roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
All right, uh motion passes, moving on to the regular agenda, first reading. Consideration, discussion, and possible action on ordinance rezoning ten point zero one acres more or less out of the A C Caldwell survey number fifty two abstract one fifty four Travis County, Texas, and being located at fourteen seven one nine. US Highway two ninety east. Maynor, Texas, from agricultural A to heavy commercial C three, and I'm gonna add in the first reading consideration discussion of possible action on ordinance rezoning eight point nine three acres more or less out of the A C Caldwell survey Travis County, Texas, and being located at thirteen three hundred US Highway two ninety east, Maynor, Texas, from agricultural A to medium commercial C. These are the two we just did the public hearings on. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the first readings for the rezoning requests as stated by you for agenda items six and seven.
It's been so motioned, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
And seconded, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion?
Uh Deja, is this where you would like to ask your question? Councilwoman Hill?
No.
All right, if there's no questions, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, agenda item six and seven passed, moving on to agenda item number eight. Consideration, discussion, and possible action on an award of a construction contract for the twenty twenty wastewater collection system improvement to some underway underground LLC in the amount of four hundred eighteen thousand and ninety seven dollars. Uh Samuel?
Yes, Mayor Wallace and council, this is a construction contract for the twenty twenty wastewater collection system improvements. It's located on Bastrop and Parsons Street. It's basically upsizing a weight inch line to a twelve inch line and lowering a section of eight inch line to serve the many apartments. Um it's a C I P project. We received eight bids, the low bid was where underground LLC, it came in below our estimate, it cost it four hundred eighteen thousand and ninety seven dollars. We checked all the references and financials and they're financially stable and have bonding capacity and they got good references for this kind of work. So we're recommending that you award the base bid to where underground LLC for four hundred eighteen thousand and ninety seven dollars.
Got it, uh do I have a motion on the floor?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve awarding the construction contract for the twenty twenty wastewater collection system improvements to Guerra underground LLC in the amount of four hundred and eighteen thousand and ninety seven dollars.
It has been so motioned, do I have a second?
I second.
And seconded, any questions to the motion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, were these lines, these wastewater lines, were they larger than eight inches? I thought they were twelve.
Well, it start off as eight, they're eight right now, and we're having to increase one to twelve inch.
Okay.
Just for the apartments.
Oh, just for the apartment, so there there won't be a need to like, I know fourteen is expensive. But there won't be a need for that to go up any higher later?
I I don't believe so because that area is kind of built out. So, I mean, anything can happen, you could tear down homes and build a big apartments, but I it doesn't, it doesn't seem like.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions?
Um can you just uh on that alternate line, we're just talking about the uh the manhole sizes. Um can you explain that piece if that's just um if they go with a different size, it could um get up to fifty one thousand or is that actual part of the um that part of four hundred eighteen, or would that be an additional cost, can you explain that part?
If, yeah, if it's that's that was put on there to see what the what the prices came in as, those those manholes are okay as they are. But if we go out there and start excavating and one of them is just, we find something on them that's just needs it needs to be replaced, we got a bid item for that. We don't expect it, but at least we had, it's an offer, it's an addition to that four and eighteen thousand if it's required.
Okay.
Which we don't anticipate it being.
All right, then if it's, it's because it's listed as the as the second item, so um would that then be another selection of a different company or will we stay with the same company?
Well, I think what we do, if if it happened, we would do a change order to 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 add that in.
Okay, because the reason I'm asking, because there's some other companies that had that portion um at a at a better price.
Right, yeah, if we looked at that, the combination of the two and it's you always, you know, you gotta give it to the person that's got the best combination, but yeah, you're right. It'd be nice to be able to give somebody this and somebody else the ultimate, but I don't think we're allowed to do that. Unless we rebid it.
Okay. Well, is that a I'm asking because, you know, twenty eight and fifty one, you know, is a bit chunk of change that can go, you know, uh I think that's about the cost of that um uh employment employee insurance money we were talking about earlier. And so that's why I'm, you know, so when I'm looking at these kinds of things, I'm just thinking about all those different pieces. I know, I I miss, I already know, I see you coming, I know that it can't go for that. I'm just, I'm just speaking in general.
This is all, this is uh obviously, it's a C I P project, so we do luxury of using our impact fees, which of course you understand are completely restricted, so.
Yeah, I was just thinking in general of maximizing, that's that's all, that that was probably poor example, but.
No, no, I understand, no, no, but you know, um and Sam is correct, once we bid something out, um that's why the alternatives are are on there just to kind of factor in what the um bottom line number is and what if if the change order is actually is actually needed, then we do have that there in place. Um like Sam said, if we chose to rebid it, we could. Um but again, that delays a project, there is a little bit more money involved with uh with rebidding. Um advertisement, obviously, um you know, Sam's time is not free as well, so it just it it would just be better just to stick with the alternative.
Any additional questions? There being none, do I have a motion on the floor?
Already did a motion, mayor.
Roll call please, oh, Jean has a comment, please, Jean.
No, I'm just clicking on the answer, yes.
Got it, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yeah.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
All right, agenda item number nine is approved. Go ahead.
Sorry, number nine was pulled, so there's no action.
That's right. Agenda item was pulled, geez, correct, agenda item number ten, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the purchase contract with Grant Properties LLC for a wastewater easement with temporary construction easement, Sam?
So thi- this is a twenty five foot wastewater easement and temporary construction easement. It's for the Cottonwood Creek wastewater collection line, y'all have had several of these on other other meetings. Uh the this is pretty straightforward, the price is based on Travis County appraisal district property values and the costs are covered by the developer per up agreement.
Got it, do I have a motion on the floor?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase contract for France Properties LLC for wastewater easement with temporary construction easement.
It's been so motioned, do I have a second?
I second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Wallace. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes, moving on to agenda item number eleven, consideration, discussion, and possible action on a development agreement for the Palomino Development, Scott.
So this is uh it's a fifty acre tract across from the senior high school up on nine seventy three and Johnson Road. Um and a few months back, it was zoned to two family um and uh C two medium commercial, so there's two three acre tracks that are C two and the remainder is uh about forty four acres is that two family. Uh and so they are going through their their plotting right now, um but as is common with many developments. Um you know, there's a this development agreement and what this does, um it their request was for concurrent review for their subdivision, so it helps with the the plotting to go as fast as possible. Um and that the traffic in impact analysis that they're doing um can be done at the same time as their preliminary plan. Uh there's normally that has to be done before they can submit preliminary, but um with this, the traffic impact analysis would need to be approved um before their preliminary can be approved, but they can be reviewed at the same time. And so again, it just helps them, you know, go a little faster with their planning, uh and in return for the city, uh we're doing development standards. Uh so there's a masonry requirement for the the residential component of it. And then for the commercial tracks, um again, there's a masonry component. Um but also all the architectural and outdoor lighting standards apply for the commercial tracks as well. Um and so these are things that without a development agreement, um you know, the state doesn't allow us to enforce um building materials. So we can only get those through development agreements. Uh so it's it's very common for us now in the past year to do these concurrent review masonry standard development agreements, we actually have a template for it. And so that's that's all this accomplishes, it's it's pretty standard for us now.
I'll make a recommendation to approve development agreement for the uh Palomino Development.
It's just so moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Questions to the motion?
Yeah, I have a question, just curious about the uh um they're constructing at Johnson Road. Do you know, or maybe I've missed it, but do you know how wide that may be?
Um.
What what those specifications, but I don't.
It's a primary collector, so I think the right away is sixty and then but the pavement width is like forty five or something like that. Uh a standard road, you know, your residential streets, it's fifty feet of right away with thirty feet of pavement. Uh so primary collector, it's still two lanes, one way, one lane each way, but they're a little wider, um so it's it's actually like a main road. Um and so this is consistent with our our thoroughfare plan was if you familiar with that section at Johnson, there's, you know, you know, all these zigzags into it. Um and so our thoroughfare plan kind of has it go straight through, um so kind of takes out two of those sharp ninety degree angles. Um so once you're down Johnson, you can go straight through to nine seventy three versus right turn, right turn. Or left turn, right turn.
And that's going to help with traffic flow or or that's more for their design?
Uh it does help with traffic flow, I mean, if you're eliminating those hard ninety degree turns, um Uh, it does help with traffic flow. I mean, if you're eliminating those hard ninety degree turns, um, you know, people don't have to slow down as much, um, but it just keeps traffic moving to to the road. And then, like I said, it's, our, our thoroughfare plan has it as a primary collector. It's meant to handle more traffic. And so right now, the existing Johnson Road, um, isn't designed that way, so.
Any additional questions? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Fortem Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
And Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, agenda item number eleven passes, moving on to agenda item number twelve. Been waiting for this for a long time, y'all. Alright, agenda item number twelve, consideration, discussion, impossible action on an award of a professional services contract for the twenty fifty comprehensive plan to Freeze and Nichols Incorporated in the amount of three hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and sixty eight dollars. That.
Right, so, uh, as you're aware, you know, back in October, um, I think, you know, we, we had our RFP selection committee meet and go over the nine proposals that we got. Uh, they did one round of scoring and then, you know, selected a, a couple of candidates to go to a second round. Uh, did interviews on the second round, we scored them, and the highest scoring proposal was from Freeze and Nichols. Um, and so we subsequently kind of had meetings with them, we went over our scope and everything and kind of what, you know, we were prioritizing, and so they've put together, um, their, their scope and schedule, and we have a contract that we leave as sound and great and will be perfect for the city and, um, the representative that's gonna be working with us, Chance Sparks, he's here too, if y'all have questions for him.
Got it. Uh, I did have a question. Um, what does it mean, if I can get to this? Uh, number six on page two forty two, when it says this contract may be executed in two or more counterparts.
Mayor, do you want to do a motion first?
No, I got a question. I'm not, I'm not going to do a motion yet.
Yeah, that's a, I'm not sure if Chance has seen that, but that's, our attorneys put this together, so that's attorney language that I'm unfamiliar with, uh, I apologize.
Okay, I, I just, uh, to me, that phrase counterparts, right? Um, and two or more, like what's more mean? More mean?
I mean, there's just, you know, amendments, addendums to this that, you know, combined eventually, you'll make the contract, but we subsequently have amendments or addendums to this contract as we work through it. There's multiple parts to it.
Yeah, okay, cool. Um, do I have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Um, so I'd like to make a motion, uh, that City Council approve a professional service contract for the twenty fifty comprehensive plan to Freeze and Nichols Inc. Incorporated in the amount of three hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and sixty eight dollars.
Has been so motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded. Uh, questions to the motion?
I don't have a question, I have, uh, comments, uh, just to provide to council as I served on the, uh, uh, committee. Um, we did have, um, a few great, um, proposals to review, and they came down to, uh, really close. Uh, and, um, you know, we got very nitpicky on stuff that we liked and wanted and, and wanted to make sure of, and, um, you know, ultimately, we came with, um, with Freeze and Nichols, and, uh, we believe a lot of the things that council has talked about uh, more, and, and even more so, a lot of things we've heard from residents, um, for years in regards to historic, uh, preservation, uh, parks, uh, program, not programs, but, uh, infrastructure, streets, um, all those kinds of things we've talked about and heard from residents for a long time. Um, um, can y'all hear me good? I'm too low?
No, you're good.
Okay, um, but all the, all the different things we've talked about in the past, um, and heard from our residents and on, on all those surveys and data we collected. Um, I'm excited because it's, it's in, uh, it seems that, uh, Freeze and Nichols is going to help us, uh, put together a plan about, and it's a long time coming for the city of Maynor, and I'm just excited about our future.
Um, Scott, I'm looking at, and maybe haven't got to it, the, uh, the projected schedule, the timeline and stuff. I know in the proposal, they had a timeline of things occurring and when they were potentially overlap and what month they were talking about doing it in. So, how does summary of meetings and trips on page two fifty nine? When is the kickoff meeting in study area tour supposed to begin?
Uh, I'll tell Chance into that one.
Uh, sure. Uh, this is Chance Sparks with Freeze and Nichols, happy to be here. Uh, so upon execution of the contract, we typically see the kickoff meetings and things like that usually occur within thirty days. Uh, we'll have an initial, a, a project initiation call, uh, initially, and then, uh, and then also a data request from the city of Maynor, and then we usually try to get that tour set up, uh, within the first month.
Okay, uh, how the, what's the plan of engagement, especially since we have COVID going on to be able, uh, hopefully get large participation from the community?
Sure, so we use a combination of tools, uh, uh, particularly for Maynor, we'll use a, a variety of virtual engagement tools, but we also use, uh, some, uh, probably the best description of them is, uh, is in-person uh, engagement options that are still maintain the social distancing, uh, parameters that are best practice, uh, and, and also reaching out through various stakeholder groups, things like that. Uh, our main goal being to find people where they are most comfortable, uh, where people are most comfortable is where they will share the most uh, in terms of what they would like to see in Maynor's future. Uh, but we have a, a pretty extensive set of tools that we'll put together for that. Um, and, uh, and we've also crafted this language, uh, to be agile depending on what happens with the, uh, uh, as the COVID pandemic continues and hopefully resolves, uh, during this planning period.
Got it. Um, number six under test, under task two, when you're talking about community workshops. Uh, who, who is all lumped within your concept of community?
Uh, that's actually something we'll talk about with you, uh, for what do you, what is your concept of community and what are, what are your expectations? Um, uh, with, with, with that, we usually are, are looking towards, is it a rep, is it a representative group? Um, is it, uh, getting good participation across all age cohorts, uh, races, socioeconomic status, things like that? Uh, but we also just look, you know, for, uh, particularly like an advisory committee to kind of be our, our moral compass on, are we catching everybody? And, uh, and are there any voices that are missing along the way? Uh, that's something we try to be very aware of. Uh, we have a, a pretty strong, uh, we, we view this basically as part of an equity diversity inclusion initiative uh, to make sure that we're touching everybody that we need to, and that there, that's being done so in a meaningful way. Uh, does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, and, and great answer, I'll just be honest with that. Um, yeah, because we have talked about an aspect of including even, uh, information and perspectives from our youth and, and having, uh, the relationship with the school district to be able to identify and get information through, through, through their channels as well. So we're not just getting ours, we're not just getting specific communities. Uh, we're counseled off, we like to be inclusive to the ETJ, knowing that majority of the services they receive are all in city limits. So, wanna really have a three sixty, uh, um, um, holistic input.
Absolutely.
Um, anybody else have any questions?
Uh, Chance, can you, can you just give them a quick overview of, like, um, what, uh, how long this process, um, um, could take? Um, best, you know, just on average, and then, um, maybe discuss some of those pieces like the, the branding and the website, the informational piece that people will be able to discuss.
Sure.
Communication is important for us, and so I want, I think that'd be good for the team here.
Sure, I'll, I'll do my best to kind of give a succinct elevator speech version of this. Uh, so, uh, this overall comprehensive planning process, uh, we have slated this for fifteen months, um, which is fairly quick, uh, for a comprehensive plan. And, uh, it's broken out into, into, you know, various pieces that I can, you know, highlight kind of quickly along the way here. Um, the, uh, a lot of the engagement, you've already heard me mention, use of the advisory committee meetings, uh, some of that, but also uh, we'll be rolling out an interactive project website with this, uh, kind of a one stop shop for everything related to the project. Uh, it's gonna include features, uh, like idea walls where people, it's kind of like the virtual equivalent of slapping a post-it note on a wall uh, with an idea that people can react to. Uh, we'll be doing some interactive surveying, uh, using that same tool. We also use this uh, as a, as our, uh, place to post things like draft documents, uh, uh, summaries of meetings that have taken place, summaries of the engagement that has taken place along the way. Um, we have found that that's actually, you know, it's not just, uh, you know, doing the right thing in terms of communicating, it makes the overall project go a lot smoother. Um, simply because people are well aware of what's going on. Well, fundamentals of communication is if you don't communicate well and write the narrative, then somebody else is going to write that narrative for you. Uh, and so it's better off to, uh, to have that in place, uh, on your end. Um, there's several pieces to this. Of course, the goal setting, uh, and guiding principles. Um, the guiding principles are a little bit different, uh, because you're a very high growth city. So we use guiding principles as the, the framework to deal with all those weird issues that will come up after this plan is adopted uh, that we never could have contemplated. Uh, the comparison I use for that is that, uh, you know, people, you know, when they were doing comprehensive plans twenty years ago, we're talking about taxis. Today, we're talking about Uber. Uh, and driverless cars and things like that that weren't really on the horizon. Um, the land use component is gonna use a scenario-based metric tool. Uh, the idea being that people can understand what are the trade-offs to different approaches to development in the future. Uh, you know, what does that mean for you, for a tax rate? What does that mean for water use? Um, you know, a whole variety of factors. Uh, we do have a focus in the downtown for the, uh, both the existing downtown and that transit-oriented development potential, and how to make those two uh, jive together really well. Uh, of course, a strong transportation component, I heard about that this, uh, this evening on, uh, in the conversations here. Uh, to build out a thoroughfare plan, talk about infrastructure, uh, but one piece I'm really excited about is the parks, recreation and open space. Um, a, a strong parks, recreation and open space plan can actually set you up for a variety of funding sources uh, to make improvements to existing parks and to support any acquisitions in the future. Uh, it's also a really good area to get lots of involvement. Uh, people love parks. So, uh, so it's a place where you can actually touch a lot of people that may not engage otherwise, uh, along the way. Uh, we do have an economic development component, uh, to this, uh, with TXP, that's Travis James. Um, uh, he is the, uh, probably one of the best economists I know of in the state of Texas. Um, just a great guy, really knows the stuff, knows the Austin region better than almost anyone. Um, and then getting into community image and urban design, this is where we start talking about how do you take all this information you're getting from the public and, and determine what is Maynor, you know, going forward. Um, we will put together a logo for this plan effort and, uh, some things like that, uh, to help with various marketing. Um, we've also are anticipating identifying things like, you know, wayfinding and gateway signage, things like that to help kind of create that identity. And, uh, and then, and then lastly, I'll mention implementation. So, in the, in the urban planning world, I'm kind of known as an implementation guy. Um, I'm kind of obsessed with it. Uh, when I read other plans, I read them backwards to forwards, uh, to give you an idea of how my brain works. Uh, and, uh, we want to help craft that so that, uh, it can inform a strategic approach to what you do as a city council, what the city administration does. Uh, it can help inform budgets, things like that, so it's a really, becomes a very useful tool. Uh, and, uh, and a way for you to, to demonstrate to the public that not only did you listen to them during the planning process, you're showing them how you have taken what they asked you to do and are actually doing it. And that's really important for building public trust. Um, it helps that communication aspect and, uh, you know, our goal when the dust clears away is that this comprehen- comprehensive plan makes your jobs easier. Um, and makes the public really happy with everything you do. That's kind of our metric for success. Um, that was probably longer than you wanted, uh, but I wanted to try to at least give you a, a general feel for what you might expect since y'all haven't been down this road before.
No, that was good because what we love to do is when people ask questions, we love to tell them what date, time, and what part of the recording to go to. So that's good. Um, we appreciate. Um, now going to page two sixty F and G. Can you elaborate on that? So F is preparation of new or updated zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance and other development regulations, including unified development code. And G is preparing applications and supporting documents for government grants, loans, or planning advances in providing data for detailed applications. Uh, you know, tha- that's something I already kind of talked about already about ordinances, do we potentially need to change ordinances? Uh, so it's a little more restrictive and we have more fleshed out codes, uh, to ensure, you know, what we changed from zoning, we don't all, have, have a change for zoning for one thing, but it, it has so much leeway that we can't restrict or stop something being built. Especially on the only two corridors we have that we're, that we're identifying as high revenue. And then the other piece where we're, we're talking about, there's a lot of different types of funding opportunities and so forth out there. But just because we don't have the financial capability, nor, nor the space right now to bring on some of those assets. Uh, what are some things we can expect, you know, as you have these listed in here, F and G?
Sure, so I think the area you're, you're looking towards is, uh, the additional services. This is something we put in a lot of contracts uh, as, because it's not really part of the comprehensive plan, but it's things that we commonly see pop up out of a comprehensive plan where a city says, hey, could you take this a step further and do X, Y, or Z? So that's what these provisions are actually for. Uh, but probably the best way to explain is what is actually within your contract. So, and within the implementation, we have a section in that called the di- uh, a code diagnostic. What that is, is actually looking at your adopted codes, uh, your, you know, particularly your zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance, and assessing them based on the direction the comprehensive plan is giving. Uh, and so it would, you know, if your comprehensive plan is saying that the, uh, the, the two ninety corridor needs to be treated a certain way, then we'd actually go through your code and say, okay, these are the things you need to change within your zoning ordinance, uh, in order to effectively implement that. Uh, the next step beyond that would be for y'all to turn around and say, okay, Freeze and Nichols, can you actually just go ahead and just write those codes for us? That's what that's referring to. Um, the other part of that, uh, that you asked about was, uh, this letter G, which is looking at, uh, you know, grant applications and things like that. And that's just in case, you know, something comes along during the comprehensive plan process, and you guys raise your hand and say, hey, we need some help. Uh, we, we see a funding opportunity, want, we want to do something, can y'all help us? It's a way for us to use this contract as a vehicle through an amendment, uh, to be able to support y'all. Or sometimes, on some types of grant applications, we just do them, um, because, um, you know, it's either it's, it's set up where we'll be helping later or something like that. Um, most common of those being things like Campo applications for, uh, for transportation improvement, uh, plans, things like that. Uh, that's kind of what that's referring to, but you also asked about, you know, what if you're not ready to take on those assets from an, from an operation, the maintenance standpoint? Uh, that's actually part of what we emphasize a lot in our implementation is, what is your capacity? Um, because there's the, uh, there's, there's the Toyota version of, of how you do this, there's the Lexus version of how you do this, and there's, I don't know, the Ferrari version, um, for how you can implement anything. Um, and we try to make sure that what we're doing is actually aligning to your capacities. Uh, so that you don't get frustrated, uh, or that you don't end up upside down by your toenails, sort of thing. Uh, because you bit off a, a large capital project and now it's haunting you with an. Uh, because you bit off a a large capital project and now it's haunting you with an extra four hundred thousand dollars a year in O and M. We don't want to put you in that situation. Uh, we want to make sure that you're you're lined up for success. Um, parks is actually a good area to look at that in. Um, people get really excited about a major park or a big community swimming pool, but those come with, uh, a cost that that will follow you. And so we'll make sure that your eyes are wide open to that, um, and, uh, so that you can make decisions that you need to in a fiscally prudent manner.
Yeah, and bringing our financial consultant in on that aspect as well.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Uh, any additional questions? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Weir.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace.
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes, looking forward to getting this thing kicked off within thirty days, uh, that's what you gave me to mark, so if we hit day thirty-one, no, I'm calling you.
All right, sounds good.
All right, oh, sounds good, all right. Uh, moving on to agenda item number thirteen. Uh, this was a tabled item, consideration, discussion, and possible action on, uh, city council committee, committee meetings. Um, you know what, I'm gonna hand this one over to, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Harvey. Um, do with this agenda item as you feel free.
Do with it, do with the agenda item as I feel free.
That means close it, we're good.
Huh?
That means close it, we're good.
That mean close it? Well, I'll let, um, I'll let somebody else make the motion, but I, I, before that happens though, I want to thank, um, uh, UVI for getting together, um, this, uh, mayor and city council ad, um, ad hoc, uh, committee meetings from the past and establishing peace. Uh, because that information is going to prove to be valuable, um, as we move forward and ensuring that we're taking care of all of our pieces, so. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
All right. All right, go ahead.
So we were talking about first and third Wednesdays and, um, uh, we have a choice to, uh, make a motion here, um, or to, uh, regarding this area, so. I'll take, I'll take motions for it. For, for, for or against?
Mayor Pro Tim, I make a motion that we approve the city council committee meeting times is the first and third Wednesdays of the month to coincide with the regular city council meetings from time period of nine to five P M, if possible, for the members of the committees.
Is this a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
A second. Second.
How many times you go? No, this is okay. Uh, it has been seconded, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion?
So are these like work, uh, am I, uh, workday?
Um, so the intent was at least two days uh, of the month that that hopefully aligned with when the city council was gonna be for council members to try to leave those two days open, uh, as best as possible for committee meetings to be held during those two days. Uh, and for any other type of meetings or 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 sit downs that need to happen just to be caught up on things and uh, so we're not having to continue to do workshops on the weekend or or, uh, having to have late eve, multiple evening types of meetings. Uh, just try to find a way to simplify the additional work that that's going on uh, that needs to occur with the growth of the city, different committees that that need to be created to help navigate, plan, and strategize for things to be on the city council agenda and then things that are approved that require additional work outside of, uh, the city council meetings. Um, so that was intent.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Any additional? Go ahead.
Uh, just for clarification, um, uh, we're not obligated to have Wednesday meetings if we, our schedule does not permit, correct?
Correct, it's not mandatory, it's basically a, everybody's saying these two Wednesdays should be the ideal go-to for meetings first. If that does, if that Wednesday doesn't work for that committee for whatever reason, if it doesn't work, uh, uh, then looking to another day. But City Hall, when coordinating with council for meetings, should be at least looking at those two Wednesdays first. So hopefully, like, new council members and so forth can at least be able to say, okay, uh, to their boss or whatever. Most of my committee meetings I'm gonna have, we're gonna try to have them on these two days, so I don't have to keep asking for time off any other day throughout throughout the week, especially those those of those of you all that are on like four to eight different committees. Any additional questions? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Weir.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace.
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa.
Yes.
Thank you.
Man, y'all made me have to work for that one, good grief. Uh, no, uh, I think I think it's a good, a good decision, um, and we can flesh out, flesh it out later, but, um, as we're talking about new councils and 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 all of you all know, we're drastically doing a lot more uh, than than, you know, previous years, and so, uh, I I think it's another good way forward for all of us and and for the city. Uh, and and to help individuals that are coming on that may not understand the magnitude of work that that they're gonna have to put in either. Uh, with that, this meeting is adjourned at eight nineteen P M. You all have a good one. Um, I'm going back to bed, so, all right.